Good morning, everyone. It's now my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Robyn Deutch. She's a psychologist and director of forensic services of the Children in the Law Program in the Department of Psychiatry at Massachusetts General Hospital and an assistant professor at Harvard Medical School. Her work has focused on the application of child development and research to children's adjustment to divorce, the evaluation of families involved in family change, parenting issues, and management of high conflict divorce. Dr. Deutch has published articles on the effects of high conflict divorce, the evaluation of domestic violence, management of cases by Manchhausen by proxy, and is co-author of "You All Want This: Seven Things Your Teenager Can't Tell You and How to Talk About Him Anyway." She is a former president of the AFCC Board of Directors, a former president of the Massachusetts Chapter of AFCC, a member of the AFCC Task Force that developed the Guidelines for Parenting Coordination, a member of the APA Task Force that developed Guidelines for Parenting Coordinators as well. She is best known here lovingly as everyone's favorite princess.
We are so thrilled to be here. We have a really, what we hope is going to be, a fun and interesting morning, having a town hall, which AFCC does every once in a while. So I want to just introduce what this is all about. In 2009, then-president, the Honorable Emil Krusick, sitting right here at this table, appointed a task force on child custody consulting. And the point of the task force was to explore the emerging role of the mental health professional who was engaged by an attorney for a parent to consult about a child custody evaluation or child custody matter. So he appointed the Honorable Judge Bill Fee and me as the co-chairs of the committee and wisely Andy Shepherd as the reporter. Bill Fee is going to introduce the members of the task force to you shortly, so I will save that part. But let me talk a little bit about how Andy Shepherd has helped us. Andy, who is, of course, one of the top law professors in the country, quickly got two of his students involved, and you will be introduced to them as well. And they began to research any regulations, specific regulations, for lawyers or mental health professionals or any case law from any jurisdiction in the United States that provide clear guidance on the role of the child custody consultant. We found none. So they then developed hypotheticals, and from those hypotheticals, in great detail in conference calls, we processed them as a way to try to define the role of the child custody consultant and to identify the gray areas. We broke up into work groups and we're now in the process of exchanging drafts of a discussion paper. What we discovered, surprisingly, I know you're all going to be shocked about this, but we discovered that lawyers and mental health professionals' view have very different points of view. And they approach these issues through different professional and ethical lenses, sort of like Rashomon. We also discovered that within the mental health group, there was quite a bit of diversity of views. So what I want to do now is introduce to you Andy Shepherd, who is going to talk about some of the points of consensus and the controversies. Andy Shepherd is, as I said, a law professor at Hostory University and the director for the Center of Children, Families, and the Law. He's also the editor of AFCC's journal, The Family Court Review. He's a reporter for the Uniform Collaborative Law Act. He's co-chair of the Family Law Education Reform Act, and he's done so many other things that I'm not going to talk about them now. But he will come and talk to us about sort of where we agree and disagree on this emerging role.
Can everybody hear me? This has been a fun project. I kind of feel like we don't, us lawyers, we don't have a dog in this fight, okay? This is, we're kind of refereeing a fight within the mental health community, although we're, of course, the ones who are hiring you. Robyn thinks, and it's a dispute between lawyers and mental health people, I think it's actually a dispute within the mental health community, but what is actually going on here is a reconciliation of the adversary system with the mental health role in custody evaluations. But let me talk about that for a minute. First of all, this has been a real pleasure to do so far. The task force is lively, working with Bill and Robyn is just terrific, and Leslie, where's Leslie? She's been great. Here's what we've, I wish I could report there's been a lot of agreements, okay? There's been some, and that's what I'm going to report on. And what I'm also then going to do is talk about some of the key questions that we're discussing, because that's really where we need your input from today. We have agreed that consultants, mental health consultants, play three roles. The roles are overlapping, but they are distinctive enough to be identified as three different roles. Educator of a parent about a custody evaluation, a support for a parent going through a custody evaluation, and roughly a litigation consultant to a lawyer to analyze the forensic report and to provide a range for cross-examination about if the forensic evaluator is called to testify. We have agreed on the form of what we are going to produce. It's going to be a discussion paper. It's not going to be a series of guidelines and rules like the custody, like the rules for, the guidelines for custody evaluation or the guidelines for parent coordinator. The role of mental health consultant is not formed enough, and there's not enough consensus yet, to say, "Do this, do that, do this, do that, do this, do that," in a rigid kind of way. What we're going to do is provide an overview of the development of the role of the mental health consultant and examples of what we regard as useful practice and cautions where there are concerns about some of those practices. Now for some big questions that we've been debating. First, how much should the consultant influence the information that's presented to the evaluator? We agree generally, for example, that it's really not a good idea for a consultant to school the parent on appropriate answers on the Rorschach test. We are discussing whether it's appropriate for the consultant to try to influence the behavior of the parent, become more involved with your children. We are discussing, how about discussing the specific practices of the evaluator? This evaluator tends to do interviews in the following way. So that's one big area of discussion and dialogue. A next area of discussion and dialogue, and we'd like your inputs on some of these, is how helpful can the consultant be to the parent? Can the consultant recommend therapist, recommend parenting plans, mediation, therapy? Those are also, again, areas of discussion. What is the consultant's responsibility to the child? Do they have an independent responsibility to the child? Many of the consultants think that their client's the attorney. Us attorneys, while we love children dearly, when we represent a parent, do not have an ethical responsibility to the children. Many of you believe that you have, even when you're functioning as a consultant to an attorney, have an independent ethical responsibility to the children. This comes back to what I was talking about earlier. We're seeing a dialogue about how we reconcile the different professional values in the context of the system. Next question. When, if ever, should the consultant testify? That is a subject of significant debate about whether or not, if you're hired as a consultant, you lose your objectivity and if you're called to testify, and if, do you have interactions with the parent that cause you to lose enough objectivity that you maybe should never testify? Final question, my question, many ways, as a lawyer. The great problem in the legal system is not the 20% of parents or 10% of parents who can afford counsel and can afford maybe litigation consultants for a custody evaluation. The great problem in the legal system is the availability of services to the bottom 80%, many of whom are going pro se. If you look at the divorce statistics over the years, in about 1960, virtually everybody was represented by a lawyer who went through a divorce. Today, it's maybe 20%. And plus, we have a huge population of unmarried. Why am I talking about this? The more that mental health consultants have to play multiple roles because there is deemed to be a conflict of interest if they overlap roles, the more expensive the services will be. If you have to have two mental health people to perform an evaluation role and a support role, that's double the price. So what we're really discussing when we create conflict of interest rules, as we do in the legal profession, is how expensive those services are going to be and is it worth really, or the dangers that are involved in playing multiple roles, the risks worth the additional extra expense to parents. So we have a challenging task before us, and we have a task that we've been performing diligently with good humor and with as much fun as we possibly can. And I think what we're here for today is to hear from the folks about their input on those big issues and about anything else they want to talk about. So to moderate that portion of the program, I have to introduce my good friend, I have the pleasure of introducing my good friend, Bill Fee. Bill is a past president of AFCC. He's been 25 years, 23, Bill, or we debated that, 23 years on the Indiana bench as a family court judge. He's a generalist because the county he lives in, he can't just be a family court judge, he does other things, but that's where his passion and great expertise is.
Good morning, good morning. Are we ready for guidelines? The task force kind of felt like, you know, it's so new, so very new, that we may not be ready for guidelines, and that's kind of a position that has been taken. But if you feel like there should be guidelines, and guidelines now, call us out on that today, okay? We're going to start with David Medoff of Boston, David Martindale, the Honorable Diane Gould-Saltman, Jeff Whitman, psychologist, Martha McCarthy.
I would like the panel to address the general issue of combining the forensic services of consultation and giving expert testimony, such as a reviewer of custody evaluation work product.
Obviously, the challenge in combining those two roles that we've wrestled with is the fact that just as a mental health profession, we have a pretty hefty literature articulating the ways in which our objectivity can be skewed and distorted by being immersed in somebody else's worldview. And those of you who, you know, have had the privilege of doing both the role of, for example, peer reviewer, where you're, you know you're going to be on this, most likely going to be on the stand, or you might be on the stand testifying, and then you start getting pulled by the legal team into, they're asking you for explicit assistance in preparing their case, in writing cross-examination questions, in suggesting strategy. I suspect you know, just by experience, the tension that's felt there between, you know, one role where you at least feel as if you're being able to keep yourself in an ostensibly neutral or objective position, and one in which you're fully joining on with the team and actually helping them try to win their case. And several of us, and not everybody, take the position that those represent conflicting roles that as often as we can, we should avoid doing simultaneously.
Anybody else want to comment?
From a legal perspective, and this is part of the discussion that we had as the task force, one of the clear problems is that if you've worked with the attorneys behind the scene, you enjoy the attorney work product protection, so that if you, you're free to discuss with the attorneys your thoughts and feelings about the case without fear that the bad stuff is going to come out because you're not testimonial expert. If you cross that line and you become the testimonial expert, then clearly that no longer applies. And the information you acquired in the consultation role, all those questions asked by either the attorney or if you choose to work with the litigants directly, the litigants asking you, "Well, what if I did this? What if I did that?" Those questions could come out on the witness stand, even though your testimony as an expert isn't necessarily about that. One of the questions then raised is, whose call is that to make? And from the perspective of the attorneys, and I think this maybe goes to what Andy was talking about, where the perception of the attorneys on the task force were, well, we take a different perspective and view the issues through the prism of our analysis and training, is that the question of whether the tactical decision about whether to have the mental health professional transition from the role of consultant to testimonial expert is a legal one and is one for the attorney to make as part of a legal tactical decision. The ethical and moral decision about whether you will choose to be that mental health expert doing that transition is one for the mental health expert.
Anybody else want to comment?
This came up in our institute, our pre-conference institute, yesterday, and I'd just like to add that it's not just about bias, but, and it's not just about the perceived veil of attorney-client work product, if it is as impermeable as some people believe it is. But it's also about credibility and the perception of impropriety. If I engage, I believe strongly, in conduct that can be perceived to reasonably cause harm to a case, and then it goes ahead and causes that harm, I'm on the hook ethically and in other ways. And I think that in either meeting with a litigant or mixing roles like that, you set yourself up for that very strong potential at least. And I realize that my line may be drawn a little more conservatively than some, but it's not just about the bias, which is the sort of sexy topic that gets tapped into in the courtroom. It's about propriety and avenues to impede someone's credibility and other factors as well.
The only point that I would make, I agree with everything other than Jeff's very polite statement that there was disagreement or something of that sort, I forget how you phrased it. I would like to point out that of the mental health professionals that are a part of this task force, there is only one, whom I will obviously not identify, that disagrees with the positions that have been stated now by Jeff, by David, and that I would reiterate. And in particular, I would reiterate what David just said, that I do have an obligation to see that the job is done right, even if the person who is paying me to do the job would prefer that I cut some corners. And so it is an issue that deals directly with my ethics, and I think it's an important issue.
Anybody else want to comment? Can I say something here about this? Oh, somebody else? But that's, the audience is Bill and Robyn.
Name and discipline, please. The person who asked the last question was Bill Austin, a psychologist.
Bob Zabell, a psychologist. It's just a comment, actually, and a concern, that there is a slippery slope from being a consultant to being an advocate, and the context of that is every one of us, most of us, practice in a community of colleagues. And my concern is that if you slide down that slippery slope, that you end up having the potential of being considered, as Margaret Hagan would say, a whore of the court. And that reputation, all you have is your reputation in a way, in the end, and that's a concern that I have, if you blur those boundaries.
I actually would like to comment about this for a second. From a law professor perspective, this comes back to what I was talking about earlier. The more time, and I may agree with what their view is, but the more roles you require some, same professionals to play, you're going to double the expense, okay? Which means the service is less accessible to people. Most of the time in the legal world, in the world of legal ethics, and I'm not saying that we should, you should apply that, but in the world of legal ethics, the kinds of things that you're describing is exactly the way Diana addresses it. Lawyers address that all the time. We make tactical decisions about whether or not we should call experts, right? In knowing that they're going to be cross-examined, knowing that their work product is going to be disclosed. I've worked with economists that do that all the time. So what you're suggesting, and I just want everybody to understand that, is a rule for psychologists that does not operate the same way economists operate, engineers operate, and other experts operate. And that may be very important for you, okay? And that's, I said, we don't have a dog in this fight. But most of the time, in the legal ethics world and the world of other expert witnesses, the kinds of problems that you're describing are done with informed consent and based on strategic decisions.
I'd like to point to some bridges that collapsed because it was necessary to take financial constraints into consideration in the construction of the bridge.
I don't disagree with that, but you're working in an adversary system.
It doesn't surprise me that psychology's on leaving cutting-edge, sophisticated ethical consideration, first of all.
Question.
But I think it's important to realize that even though attorneys may do a very sophisticated cost-benefit analysis of calling a witness, I think it's incumbent upon myself to make my own decisions about my, the boundary of my role, the ethical guidelines to which I must adhere, and my professional and even personal integrity in a case. I don't just give that up to an attorney if they decide to call me. A lot of what we do as consultants or just as mental health professionals in this field where the law meets mental health is educating people about the risks, benefits, and what can be done and can't. It happens with judges, it happens during testimony, it happens in the consultant role as well. So I hear that and respect it, but it doesn't let us off the hook.
Just a comment. Tim Tippens, I'm an attorney. I'll leave, you know, I'll leave the ethical issue or the resolution of that to the mental health profession governed by their own code, but just as a practical matter, from the point of view of a trial lawyer, I would never, never, never put my trial consultant on the stand to testify. The moment they go on the witness stand, anything I've ever said to them, anything they've ever said to me, any documents I've ever shown them are fair game and have to be disclosed, and it could be the end of the case. The reason for using two separate professionals when you can do it because you have the resources is if I'm using a trial consultant, I can have any kind of conversation, we can talk about the weaknesses of the case, and it will never come out because it is protected almost absolutely by attorney-work-product doctrine. Once they hit the stand, it's subject to disclosure. Additionally, as also mentioned up there, and I would reinforce, the perception on the part of the fact-finder, when somebody is occupying both roles, is going to be that they have less credibility. So from a practical point of view, as an advocate, I would simply never mix those roles under any circumstances.
You know, the other thing that comes to mind is that sometimes we discuss these things as if they're either-or circumstances, and occasionally, what I've done with attorneys who have said, you know, "My client absolutely can't afford to hire you as a consultant and then to also hire a testimonial expert," one of the things I'll say to them is, "You're going to get a thorough analysis of this report in advance of me getting on the stand. It's going to be highly detailed, it's going to be a bunch of pages. That in and of itself is going to be helpful to your legal team, but I can't take on the moniker of actually joining your team and helping out."
Somebody else? Diana?
Not, not all multiple roles are inconsistent. So for example, it would not be inconsistent for a mental health professional to accept a role as a reviewer of an existing child custody evaluation and, without agreeing to testify, simply come on to provide the attorney information about the strengths and the weaknesses of an evaluation report. Assuming the report had sufficient weaknesses, that the attorney has made the decision based on that review, that there should be someone to testify about those strengths and weaknesses, it wouldn't be inconsistent then for a sequential role as the testimonial expert by the person who did the review, understanding that the new role would include, of course, the probability that that person is also going to testify about the strengths of the evaluation report, not just about the weaknesses, notwithstanding those weaknesses will be detrimental to the attorney's client. So the mental health professional isn't put in a position of doing something that would be inconsistent with their ethics, either by testifying about the weaknesses of the report or by taking on sequential roles.
Aaron Robb, I'm a professional counselor. David said something that kind of got me thinking.
There are two Davids, you have to be more specific.
About doing the job right. If our job is to help the attorney who hires us educate the court about ethical practice in regards to child custody evaluation, and the attorney then asks us, "How do I ask those kind of questions? How do I cross-examine the evaluator? How do I ask you direct questions?" Isn't it part of our job, if we're to educate the court about ethical practice, to then teach the attorney what kind of questions need to be asked to elicit that information? Because if our job is to educate the court and we have an ignorant attorney who doesn't know how to bring that out, yes, we've crossed into helping them structure their case, helping them do that, but our role is still the same in terms of educating the court about ethical practice.
As a law school professor, I am concerned about the characterization of ignorant attorneys, but I'll pass on that.
Aaron, I think that you're describing something that, at least in theory, is an issue concerning which we can draw a line. I don't think it's an easy line to draw, but I think there's a distinction between assisting an attorney in putting together his or her case in a global sense and simply assisting an attorney in structuring for your testimony in particular, the questions that you need to have posed in order that you may then provide the information that you feel needs to be provided. And I certainly agree with you that that is one of the most difficult components of being a testimonial expert, that no matter what you know, you cannot function effectively as an educator for the court unless the person who's posing questions to you knows what questions to pose. And I don't know whether you know, Aaron, but when your question, when you asked it, you're actually channeling Margaret Lee, because that's really her position. Her position is that as a, as a proposed testimonial expert, it's perfectly acceptable for her to help the legal team develop questions that will elicit information from the person she, whose work she has reviewed, for example, that will help her do a better review. And I would agree with David that it's just a very, not an automatic, no, no, just something we have to handle very carefully.
Okay, we have another question.
Stephen Douglas, I'm a psychologist. It seems to me that the hidden player in the room is the 50 different, in this case, psych boards in this country. They're calling the shots about what we can do or not do, and I wondered, as the task force put this together, if they took that into consideration.
Yeah, can I, can I take that? We don't have any regulatory authority as an organization and as a task force, if that's, if that's what the question is. We aren't going to spell out regulations. We are going to try, I think, to identify what we, what is, what are good practices and concerns, but it's not going to be around now practice issues or licensing issues. Am I, did I have that right?
I'm not sure I would agree. I know certainly I take it into consideration, and I think that most of the mental health professionals that are on the task force have been involved in one way, shape, or form with licensing boards. I've consulted on many, many, many licensing board complaints throughout the United States. I don't know offhand how many different states, but I don't know of a single state in the United States that has any regulation that directly addresses the issues that we are now discussing. If there is such a state, I would really appreciate somebody either right here in this room or later educating me about that. I think, just in a more general sense, that one of the single biggest problems that we confront as we attack the task of setting guidelines for doing custody evaluations, setting guidelines for parenting coordination, setting guidelines for doing review work and testimonial work, is that the vast majority of the regulations governing the profession of psychology were developed when the only form of psychology out there was treatment. And with very few exceptions, most of the regulations have not been updated at all since other forms of psychological services have entered the arena.
Anybody else want to comment on this?
My name is Steve Eichel, I'm a psychologist, and I want to address this issue, not...
And owner of Zoe the Cat.
That's correct, who's very well, very alive and well, thank you very much. But I want to address your, the issue from the point of view of a member, I'm a member of the State Psychology Board, and I'm going to have to agree with what you said. First of all, certainly in Delaware, there are no regulations that govern this, however... However, if a complaint were to come to my board, first of all, I think there's sort of much ado about nothing in the sense that if I'm the person doing the custody evaluation, it's fairly common for me to speak to the attorney who represents the person who comes out looking better in the custody evaluation and provide that attorney with some guidelines as to what to ask me if the attorney doesn't know, what to highlight, et cetera, et cetera. I think it would be a very different situation if I were reviewing someone else's report, and I think that would look different to, if I were evaluating someone else's report and not doing my own custody evaluation, in other words, I'm strictly an outside consultant. I think that would look different to a psychology board than the former case.
Anybody want to comment?
I'm just a little unclear, because in Massachusetts, when appointed by the court, the court is your client, and if I'm a child custody evaluator, we call them GALs here, guardians ad litem, and I engage in a conversation with the attorney of the favorable parent, that's clearly ex parte communication, and in my opinion, is clearly setting me up for a host of hurt in terms of credibility and potential licensing complaint if I engage in that behavior. But I understand in New Jersey or something, there are one-sided evaluations happening routinely, or there's something like that. So I'm just speaking from my perspective and knowledge about Massachusetts.
Okay, New Jersey, you've been called out.
We have, and New Jersey has many strange practices as a New Yorker.
Show of hands.
Please.
I'm a trial lawyer in Canada, and we have no meetings in advance of a trial with the custody and access assessor, totally verboten. Sometimes you can have a call with both counsel in advance of the trial and indicate what questions you each intend to ask, but there's no sort of taking the independent court's expert at the end of the process and making him or her into the expert for the quote "winning" party. That goes on at all where I practice, really based on the theory that this is an expert of the court as well.
Diana, you want to talk about this for a second?
Sure. In California, we actually have by rule of court a prohibition against ex parte communication by the evaluator with the attorney for either side, although in California, apparently unlike New York, we can depose them prior to trial. So you have some, but everybody is represented there. Everybody would have an opportunity to question the evaluator prior to trial.
I think we're ready for the next one.
Good morning. My name is Eric Fraser, I'm a psychologist, and I want to pose the issue to the panel regarding the 80% statistic of pro se litigants. And here's the scenario. If we even just narrow it down to the role of being a non-testifying consultant with a pro se litigant, can and how does one posture oneself in that role as a consultant? And secondly, how would the extension of attorney-work-product doctrine pass through? Has the committee thought about this, discussed it, and are there any solutions in the work?
Want to try that, David?
I have thought about it. I don't know if, I would say, the task force has thought about it, and I do have what, for me, is an answer. And it may sound as though I'm being a wise alec, but it is a thoughtful answer, and that is, if you have the funds to retain me, you also have the funds to retain an attorney. And I've been in this position. I've been contacted by pro se litigants, and I essentially said, you don't want me. If you have to choose, if the only amount of money you have is the amount of money that can either be used to retain me or to retain an attorney, I suggest very strongly that you take whatever money you have and retain an attorney instead of retaining me. I think there are times when choices have to be made.
Anybody else have any comments? Diana, I'm sorry, David, let's do Diana and then you're next.
Yeah, we addressed this in the workshop yesterday as well. From a judicial perspective, if I have somebody who has elected, having limited funds, to consult with a mental health professional, and I find out about it, in lieu of having somebody represent that person in court, I would certainly take into consideration the judgment choices of the person who has made that decision.
With all of that said, I think the non testimonial consultant role is the easier of the roles with a pro se litigant. I can't understand how anybody could make the reviewer role really work, because you're working with the attorney who is also a litigant. So by default, you're meeting with the litigant, and then you're going to take the stand, and it gets extremely ugly extremely quickly, and I've not been able to sort of wrap my mind around how that could work. And a likely recommendation would be, get yourself a lawyer.
From a law professor's perspective, great question. I think I'll put a student maybe want to write a note about that. The ethics of dealing with pro se litigants or self-represented litigants are a morice, and they, for everybody in the system, and basically not-good answers have appeared yet. These are about the most thoughtful I've heard, but they're very, very, there's really not much regulation, and I wish we could help you, maybe, you know.
I would just like to add something to what David said. David has now, on two occasions, made passing reference to his position with regard to meeting with litigants, and I'm just assuming that somewhere out there, there are people who are wondering about why he has that position, and I'm sure he can tell you, but since I think he and I share this position, I'll go first. If you do a work-product review, your task is to focus on the methodology employed by the person who did the evaluation. And as I see it, and I believe David also sees it, the only thing you can opine on are issues such as methodology, data interpretation, things of that sort, the nexus or lack thereof between the data and the ultimately expressed opinions. These are the things you can opine on. You cannot opine on the specific issues in dispute before the court because you have not conducted an evaluation. So for me, what all of this boils down to is the issue of what in simple terms we would simply describe as a distraction. If I meet with litigants, I am distracted, I cannot help but be distracted by their strengths and deficiencies as I perceive them as parents. So if my task requires that I focus on methodology, and in the course of trying to do that job, I sit down with litigants and inevitably hear their position on the issues, I am being distracted by information that at best is extraneous and at worst is prejudicial. So when I do this kind of work, I don't want to have any involvement at all, ever, with the litigants. I want to sit with the documents that I'm reviewing and not deal with the human beings.
David?
What he said. But also, and I'm really glad this is coming up now, because it didn't come up yesterday in the All Day Institute, and I feel a little guilty, it's part of my culture. But the issue of meeting with litigants at all, I was not extreme or conservative along the spectrum yesterday in the workshop, because I believe that in certain circumstances, it's allowable and acceptable for a consultant to meet with a litigant. There are some consultants that draw the line even further back than I do and say, never should a consultant meet with a litigant. Now, my role, I wasn't joking when I said what he said in terms of the role of reviewer, but in some instances, in my opinion, it is appropriate and can be done with caution and care for a non testimonial consultant to meet with the litigant and add to the case and have value and worth without violating, in my opinion, my own professional ethics and with a clear sense of what my role and boundaries are. That's not to say that there aren't some slippery slopes involved, but that's my position. But I wanted people to know, especially that were on my workshop yesterday, that some people have the opinion that there should be no meeting with clients at all.
That's interesting. I wasn't there yesterday, and when I'm working with attorneys who contact me for a peer review, for example, and their goal is hopefully for me to be on the stand, I make it very clear that I will not ever sit down with the client for a whole host of reasons, with their client. If they're hiring me as a trial consultant, I actually say the opposite. I really want to meet your client. I want to spend time with them, I want to fully explore their concerns about this assessment, how they thought it went askew, how it misrepresented them. I want to get a sense of what they're going to be like on the stand as a witness so that I can help you prepare them, that kind of thing, so it's kind of-
I don't disagree with Jeff, by the way, but the part of what's coming out here that we haven't spelled out clearly, and Diana made a passing reference to it, is the issue of sequence. And what I would just spell out for those that haven't participated in other workshops dealing with this topic, is that at least as I conceptualize the process, it involves two very discreet, separate steps. The first step is the work-product review. Whether you intend ultimately to be a consultant or a testimonial expert, you have to first, obviously, review the work and formulate your own impressions about that work. After you have done that, you can communicate to the attorney your impressions of the work, and then discuss with the attorney whether the attorney would like to use you in a non testimonial role or in a testimonial role. And I certainly agree with Jeff that if, when we get to the second stage, the decision is made that you will provide what some people call litigation support services, then it is certainly appropriate to meet with the client. The only point I would make is that even during the review stage, if you feel it is necessary, as you very well may, to get the perspective of the client, you can do that without having contact with the client. I have developed, for different types of cases, what in essence I call a homework sheet, and they are specific questions posed to the client about the client's reasons for feeling that the evaluator made an error. What are the issues from the client's perspective? And I can collect all that information without ever laying eyes on the client.
Okay, let's get some more input back there.
Yes, New Jersey is waiting in.
Oh, no, no, no.
Well, I could not take this opportunity. My name's Ed Rosenberg, I'm a psychologist. And David Martindale, I want you to please respond, because you are New Jersey, or at least were for a while.
We weren't supposed to reveal that.
I'm sorry. I'm sure you'll deny it anyway. Those of us who do get retained by one side, get retained by an attorney, what happens with it when you're being prepared for trial, if you would, and it becomes a pro se litigant? That happens in the middle of lots of stuff, and all of a sudden, while I shouldn't be talking to this litigant, he becomes the pro se litigant. Now, if I, and David, I'm asking this of you, if I say, well, I can't work on this case any longer, does that put me in, has that sit with the board if I just walk away from a case?
The only answer that I can really comfortably give is that you're posing a hypothetical, the terms of which I reject. And what I mean by that, and this is no secret to my colleagues in New Jersey, is that I reject the entire system that is used in New Jersey. I don't know of any other state, I don't know of any country in which the things that go on in New Jersey are deemed acceptable.
That will never make it into the final report.
I must say, as a New Yorker, I love this.
I forgot to say, with all due respect, to the citizens of New Jersey, the mental health professionals of New Jersey, the justice system in New Jersey, it is totally cock-eyed to have a system in which each litigant, through his or her attorney, gets to pick an evaluator, and you have two simultaneous evaluations going on, one by an evaluator chosen by, let's assume we're talking about, I don't know how to say this, the more typical family situation with a husband and a wife, a father and a mother, and so dad's attorney picks one, and mom's attorney picks one, and they go at it. I don't think I need to explain why so many of us feel this is an inherently flawed system, and I don't know why the people of New Jersey, the mental health professionals of New Jersey, don't band together and express their discontent with this particular system.
Notwithstanding the system, can you address the question, the pro se concern?
I'll address it.
By the way, one of the things-
Non-represented litigant.
Well, one of the things a good expert learns is there are times when you have to say, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, this also may explain why they were happy they canceled the tunnel into Manhattan. But aside from that issue, just from a practical perspective, my contract explicitly cues people ahead of time that if the case shifts to a pro se basis, they're warned ahead of time that I have the right to pull out and may well cancel my services at that point.
Jeff just said what I was going to say. The solution to your problem, if there is one, is in your retainer agreement, your agreement which you're free to contract, whatever terms you can, who knows, they're not unconscionable that you can reach. So that's what I would address, as opposed to fixing the tunnel.
Are we ready for another question?
Do you have one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Steve Stemby, a psychologist.
Could you stand up, please?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, thank you.
I want to get back to the other part of this, which is the consulting with the litigant to do the education and support for somebody who's going to be doing, taking a forensic evaluation. You know, I've really become more concerned about this, and I think even an ethical psychologist who is trying to do it in the right way, you know, I just think that there's so much leakage of the possibility of affecting the outcome of the custody evaluation. And I think, you know, why are we even, why do we think that we should be saying that's okay to do that? I mean, what do we lose if we say, you know, that we shouldn't be coaching or-
So the question is, why do we allow anybody to consult with a litigant for custody evaluation, approximately?
And let me just add one more thing. If we think that there's a lot of anxious litigants out there, you know, I mean, first of all, litigants are always free to say, I think I should see a therapist, you know, their attorneys are always free to say, you know, you seem like you're having a lot of emotions dealing with a divorce, why don't you go see somebody? And maybe, you know, AFCC can come up with, if there isn't already one, a pamphlet or a curriculum where courts can offer a one-hour workshop for people who are being asked to take, you know, to undergo a forensic evaluation, you know, where it's neutral and we don't have to worry about all this, you know, stuff creeping in.
I think some of the lawyers should talk about this a little bit.
We did discuss this in the task force, and from my perspective, speaking only for myself, I think that the difference between educating litigants as a consultant and serving in a therapeutic role for a litigant during the process of an evaluation is almost a semantic difference. One of the concerns that was raised was the concern on the part of the mental health professionals, well, I don't want to participate in something where I feel that what I'm doing is creating an insincere or artificial change in behavior that's really for the sole purpose of looking better in a custody evaluation and not really for a sincere change in the parenting behavior of the litigant, and I say bull hockey, because I think that if you can get the litigants to modify their behavior, it doesn't matter whether they are sincere, because the children benefit from the change in the behavior of the parent. And because custody evaluations are, in my world, never instantaneous, and sometimes the start of the process to the time that it would go to trial could be a year or two years, and because a custody evaluation is merely a snapshot in time of what the family looked like on any particular day, it is not the gestalt of the life of this family for all time prior or subsequent, I think the benefits of being able to effect a change, a positive change in parenting behavior on the part of the parents, regardless of the sincerity by which they enter into that behavioral change, benefits the children, and I'm all for it.
So as a trial lawyer, I send, I would say, 75% of my clients who are going through a custody and access assessment to some kind of coaching or coach them myself. I have a 15-year-old daughter, and I often say that she's more mature than most of my clients. And I think that there's lots of work and help that clients can get before an assessment starts. That's not about manipulating the assessor, that's not about talking about tricking the Rorschach test, but that's about doing away with perhaps inappropriate attitudes, like men always get screwed in this system, and that's about dealing with their anxiousness and concerns, explaining what the process is going to be like. Many, many of my clients are terrified of their children being interviewed, which, as you all know, is not really a legitimate fear, but that's the pop culture, is I don't want my children to be involved. And to be honest, if I don't send them for coaching, I coach them myself on the same topics.
This is a law professor's perspective, Steve. The legal community, the lawyers, I would be derailing, if somebody's being sentenced, and I would send them to behavioral therapy- If somebody's being sentenced, and I would send them to behavioral therapy beforehand or get somebody to recommend that so that they can look better at sentencing, I would not be doing my job if I didn't do that. We do that all the time. We try to influence behavior all the time for, for the purposes of making people look better in a legal proceeding. It also happens to have the benefit of being good for their children, in addition, and good for their families. That's the first thing. Secondly, and here's where the rubber kind of meets the road, lawyers have a tradition of aggressive preparation, okay? When we use the word coaching, it's not a nasty word, okay? It is a, we're guiding people through the legal system. We are helping them present themselves in the best possible way. A court evaluation is the court. Here's, I don't agree with Mary about a lot of things, but I do agree with Mary that this is the court. It's a coercive decision that could influence the way they are, their parental rights, which are constitutionally protected, by the way. And so our clients have a right to rigorous preparation for a critical incident. And that's, now, you have ethical concerns about that preparation, and that's where I, where I started. The difference in perspectives between lawyers and psychologists here is that it's maximum, in my view.
Yeah. And we're not lawyers, so I applaud what Andy said, and I recognize the appropriate role that lawyers take on in coaching, preparing, to some degree. I mean, there's a spectrum there. But that doesn't mean that we're allowed to do it or should be doing it. For me, this has been, this is one of the toughest areas that we're discussing. Even defining what coaching is has been challenging in the task force, and it's a tricky, slippery area because there's no black and white straight answer. But I think there is a difference between a consultant speaking specifically about behaviors and presentation issues with a litigant in the context of being retained by an attorney for potential or real litigation that is very concerning to me because you never know whether you're making a better parent or you're making a better sociopath. And you never know whether this person is taking notes and is going to just learn how to do GAL 101 to make the best impression possible, or whether they are actually integrating this in terms of their long-term parenting process. And I agree that sometimes a process can take quite a long time. But the risk is, in taking that more specific, detailed role as a consultant, that you are educating someone to deceive the process. And that's a risk, I think, that is extremely dangerous.
Again, I think this is one of those issues, David, where it, it's, we get magnetized toward thinking about it as either/or, and that's where I find it very challenging. Because, you know, as an introduction, I made a decision I won't do coaching anymore because it just feels too yucky, okay? So that's pretty, pretty simple for me. I'll do evaluation education. I'll sit down with a litigant and say, "Here's what an assessment's going to involve. Here's what it's going to be like. Here's the kinds of things you're likely to be asked." But if I get a call, and this happened a couple of years ago, "Dr. Whitman, my client's a cold fish. She's an engineer. She wears a calculator on her belt. She talks like a robot. She's going to look ridiculous on the stand. What am I going to do? Could you just kind of warm her up a bit?" Now, she came in, it was interesting because I really struggled with it, and there was a point at which I said to her, because she was a cold fish, and I said to her, "What are you worried about, about Joshua?" She started to cry. I said, "Just tell me the worries." Now, she hadn't done this yet. She started to weep. She lists these worries. And all I said was, "That's what the judge needs to hear." The other side of this is that sometimes we're helping people to come through more clearly, who are under profoundly stressful circumstances that distort their modal way of being. You said something to me in the streets of Denver, we were out there, that I just remember it was very helpful, which was, we got to remember, one of the tensions here is between two different, maybe versions of what truth represents. As mental health professionals, we sometimes get caught up in the idea that there's this fixed truth that we're helping people to get at, and for attorneys, and tell me if I'm getting this wrong, in a sense, truth is what the judge ultimately decides it is. And you trust the system to kind of get there.
And I actually do agree with everything that Jeff said, but I think that it's very difficult for us to know where to draw the line. And because it's so difficult, we run the risk of facilitating distortion. So what's the answer? Well, I don't know exactly what the answer is, but one thing that I might do is say to a lawyer, "Look, go have your client hire a parenting educator, a private clinician to go talk about worries and concerns and all this other stuff." And that may be an okay thing to do. But in the context of my being retained by a lawyer for the purposes of potential litigation, it's sticky. And I do do similar things to what you described. I'm just saying that I don't always feel comfortable with it. I feel the pull, and I am obsessively thinking about what's too much, what's not enough. It's not fully comfortable for me, and I try not to do it. And there's, there's got to be a better way. And I guarantee you, if, if I feel that way, other people do too, and people are getting pulled into coaching, which I think is a dirty word, either without being aware of it or by rationalizing, justifying it, and engaging in self-perception, all of which defenses I use on a daily basis, but not professionally.
We're going to go to the next question.
My name's John Gould, and professionally, I'm David Martindale's alter ego. And sometimes I'm a psychologist. I want to, I want to ask you, first, I want to tell you what I do, and then I would like the panel to respond about whether you've considered this. And David, you and I have had many talks about this issue. David and I do a lot of consulting together. We'll get a call from somebody who says, "We want to hire you, but our client wants to talk with you first to get a sense of who you are before he invests $5,000, $10,000, $50,000 in bringing you on board." Now, the way I handle that is I set up some parameters about that initial meeting and say, "I don't want to hear anything from your client about who he is as a parent. If you want to ask me about my background and training, that's fine." But there's a real-world component here that we are marketing ourselves to an extent. There's a public relations component. And I'm wondering if the task force has considered that component and how consultants, as well as work product review specialists, approach that issue.
Anybody? David, you must have thought about this.
I'll just point out that despite the many, 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 many hours that John and I work together, travel together, and so on, there are certain issues concerning which we disagree. And one of them has to do with what I will refer to as pre-retention schmoozing. I don't like to talk to anybody about anything until I have been retained. People can find out just about everything they want to know about me on the internet. They can go to my website. They can download my CV. They can request copies of articles I've written to see what my perspective is on various issues. I don't want to chat with people. And part of the reason is a simple business decision. Once I have started chatting with party A, I have now removed myself as a potential consultant to party B. So if party A decides, "I don't want to use you," and a week later, party B calls up, I can't say yes to party B. I've now been conflicted out. I don't want that to happen. So it's more of a business decision than a burning ethical issue.
But David, anybody reviewing your internet material can't get a sense of your sparkling personality. So what's up with that? I have, I think I've probably come down a little closer to what Jonathan was saying. What I will do is, I do do some pre-consultation schmoozing, I think, pre-retainer schmoozing. But what I will say to an attorney is, if I have contact with litigant, my potential role as a testimonial witness is done. And I will discuss that and educate them about that. And then we make a decision. And I understand it's a tough sell for a lot of attorneys to have litigants pony over a lot of money and struggle with, "I'm never even going to get to talk to this guy. What are you talking about?" And the issue is, maybe you will, maybe you won't, depending on what the role is, if there's going to be testimony or whatever else. So it all does, the rubber really does meet the road in terms of your fee agreements or your service agreements, and how you tee it up, and sort of problem-solving, potential pitfalls of contact with litigants, and what that might rule you out of, what role that might rule you out of further down the road.
Just, just to chime in the Ontario perspective, we, there are no such pre-retainer schmoozing ever going on in Ontario, based again on the theory that the expert is the expert of the court.
Well, I think what we're talking about is a consultant role, not a child custody evaluator role.
Right.
And just to let you know, I don't know what schmoozing really means. I mean, I do, because it's part of my culture. But what my schmooze consists of, I don't know if I can be helpful or I'm interested or willing to engage in a case until I know something about it. So I need to learn some bare basics about something about the case to see if I can even be involved or want to be involved. I'm not getting excessive detail. I'm just sort of getting a skeletal sketch to see if we should then move forward and I should be retained. It could be helpful. So I'm not talking about in-depth schmoozing. I'm talking about pseudo-superficial pre-retainer schmoozing.
We're going to go to the next question.
Everybody got back to station?
Enough about degrees of schmoozing. We have a question from this side of the room.
It's more a comment, actually. My name is Nancy McGarren. I'm currently Chair of the APA Ethics Committee. And first, I have to say that nothing I...
Welcome.
Nothing I say represents the Ethics Committee. This is just general information. But the first thing is that I can tell you that the majority of our time since I've been on the Ethics Committee is dealing with child custody issues. And I'm a child custody evaluator, so it's been very interesting for me. But the thing I would just bring up, and because a minute ago, someone on the panel said, "When attorneys call us, we feel the pull." And I can tell you, that's where we see so many people get into trouble because we've even had people in their defense say, "Well, the attorney asked me to." Or, "The judge asked me to, and so I answered this way." Or, "I took this position." Or, "I did this extra step." Or, "I changed roles." So I agree with what the panel's been talking about. I think it's really, really important. And it's very difficult when we deal with attorneys who have different goals in client preparation, and how we feel the pull, and how we set our limits around that. So I'm just really glad we're talking about this from the ethics perspective.
I'd actually want to say that I have, it would be really easy to say, "All you psychology folks, just adopt lawyer's ethics." I am very proud of my psychology colleagues for saying, "There's a different standard here." And I mean that sincerely. But it's, again, where the rubber meets the road. The more, I mean, the money and the marketing and all of that stuff does put pressure on people to come to what some of you might regard as the dark side. So I absolutely agree with you, and I also believe strongly, this is me personally, transparency here is absolutely essential. The more that there's, the practices are aired and everybody understands the generic limits, the better off everybody's going to be. I don't know if everybody, anybody wants to comment about that.
Emile Krusek, I'm a judge from Ontario, Canada. In my former life, I was a family law lawyer, and I wanted to put another model to the panel, and something that evolved in my practice. In the 19, early 1980s, we actually hired, and she became a member of our staff, right up until the very end, a social worker who acted as a consultant to, to our team of attorneys and also to our clients. It's a very different model, and I wanted to know your reaction to, to that practice. I believe the successor firm still now has a social worker on staff. And I think uniquely, it's the only firm in Canada that has a permanent staff member who acts as a consultant to the firm.
Many, that's a terrific question because one of the developments that I'm seeing in law school clinics and in legal practice around particularly criminal defense, and indeed in some family law clinics, is this interdisciplinary team. But it doesn't eliminate the problems, okay? It's the, the exact same problems continue. Hypothetically, okay, for example, social worker, believe it or not, well, you may or not, in New York, lawyers are not mandated child abuse reporters, and I don't want to start a big debate about this, okay? Social workers are. So the client, if the client reveals that they're an abuser, and one has to report and one doesn't, and even if the social worker's working for the lawyer, they have an independent ethical obligation, and they may have an independent statutory obligation to report. It doesn't, the hiring does not eliminate the independent obligations of the profession. They still have to do all the role balancing we're discussing here. It's still a really good idea. A lot of the social workers, for example, help with placement plans, a lot of the stuff that consultants would do.
I see that we're coming up on our last 10 minutes. So David, right after your comment, we're going to take a question here, and then we'll kind of see how it plays out.
Okay, my comment will be brief, and it's just following up on the last thing Andy said, which is that the hiring does not in any way change the ethical obligations of the person who has been hired. And that's one of the points that David Medoff and I are repeating over and over again, that we do appreciate, really, that there are distinctions between the obligations of attorneys and the obligations of psychologists. But what we want attorneys to understand is that the fact that you have hired me, the fact that I have accepted the task, does not change my ethical obligations. I still have to function under my rules, even though I am working for you, and your rules are different.
The fact that we're in a sandbox that has rules doesn't take away our occasional ethical requirement to step out of it or to say we won't step in.
And another comment. One of the things that puzzled me when I started this, and I don't, again, don't want, this is for the evaluators. Apparently, there's a disparity in practice about whether evaluators ask, "Have you been prepared?" Am I, am I, am I wrong about that? I mean, it would seem to me, okay, if I was doing this, that would become a routine question. Because given what I've just heard, and being on this panel, evaluators should be... Now, arguments have been made that that would violate, answering that question would violate privilege or work product. What we, when we researched it, we discovered the answer is, "Yes, I have been prepared." But you don't have to leave the details of how you're being prepared and the conversations that are being prepared. Now, I don't know if that's the right answer, because I'm not here giving legal advice to anybody about anything. But it would seem to me that if you're, if the evaluators are worried about the way preparation is going, they might start thinking about inquiring into that. And that would help you internally clean up whatever concerns about practice that you have.
Over and over so far in the workshop, what I've heard is the win. And I would just like to say that that's a little disturbing for me because the reality is that if we all begin to focus on the best interest of the child instead of the win, I think some things might come together a little bit easier.
One of the things, I think that that's, I think that is a warmly stated and sincere sentiment that I agree with as a general principle, that if it's, if we're all focused on the best interest of the child, then somehow things are going to turn out better. But I think that the problem with the sentiment is it ignores the sandbox we are in. The sandbox we're in is organized along the lines that the pursuit of truth involves setting up a contest between different versions of reality and seeing which one prepares after a hopefully orderly, well-run process. Those of you who are ADR professionals here...
Can I say something?
Nope. Those of you who are ADR professionals here certainly can articulate better than I can the problems with the adversarial system. However, if we're in that sandbox, it's the system that has the focus on the best interest of the child, not all the individual players.
I think Harman wants to say something?
Could I get in just very quickly here, Andy? Because what, as I said, this has been an education for me. But what I'm hearing in the discussions is that when lines are crossed and boundaries are blurred, it's coming from a good place. It's coming from a motivation of wanting to, to do something positive in the life of a child. That doesn't change the ethical boundaries. I think it's very important that we recognize that some of these poles that the mental health professional is, is feeling are coming out of an appeal to the sense of the well-being of the child, best interests of the child. And so you need to be very careful about that. That is our overarching goal, of course, but we all have our roles to play.
One of the things...
Last, last comment, Diane.
Sure.
So you'll end it on a good judicial note?
One of the things that a consultant has the ability to do in working with an attorney is to let the attorney know when to hold them and when to fold them. Part of the team that the mental health professional participates in when they're consulting is to strategize not just for trial, but have a structure and appropriate settlement. And that often, if not always, must take into consideration the best interest of the child.
Thank you to our wonderful task force and to all of you.
Thank you so much.